Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk, you are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, July 17th, 2023 at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for July 17th, 2023. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmembers Farber. Wethel.
Here.
Aye.
Resnick. Russell.
Here.
Aye.
Russell.
Motion passes six zero.
Here.
We will move on to items set for public hearing. Sprank. We have four.
Here.
First is petition to vacate a portion of B's Drive in the city of Dubuque, Iowa for Wethel.
Here.
City Manager Van Milligan.
Here.
And City Attorney Brumwell.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Legions.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which
a vacating petition for August 7th, 2023. Second is Burlington Street Water Main Improvement Project, initiate public bidding and set
it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
the public hearing date for August 7th, 2023. Third is Human Rights Commission Request for Commissioner Removal for August 7th, 2023. We will move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss And fourth is set for public hearing, Butler Children's Garden Voluntary Annexation Request one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is for August 21st, 2023.
Mr. Mayor.
any in-person input and state your name and address.
Mr. Russell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings
For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or
for the dates and times specified.
state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Russell and a second by Sprank.
input.
Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the Farber. Aye. Resnick. speaking order of the participants.
Aye.
Sprank. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
and consideration. Russell. And consent items can be found on pages two through five of the agenda.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
We will move on to boards and commissions.
Thank you, Adrian.
We have applicant review for the Civic Center Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission,
Do we have anyone who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? I see no one here. Do we have anyone virtually?
No.
Okay.
No input received. Housing Commission, and Long Range Plan Advisory Commission, and appointments for the Transit
All right, then I'll bring them back to the table then.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the
Advisory Board.
All right, thank you, Adrian.
consent items as recommended.
So for the Civic Center Commission, we have one three-year term through June 29th, 2024,
Second by Farber.
A motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please? and we have one applicant, Danielle Jacobs.
Farber. Aye.
Do we have anyone present to address us on this application?
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Anyone virtually?
Kavanaugh. No.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the Historic Preservation Commission. We have one interim term due to vacancies of the Cathedral District Term and the Old Main District Term. And we have two applicants, Cole Hansen and Heidi Pettit. Do we have anyone here this evening to address us on these applications? Any virtual?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Hansen did submit written input that's been uploaded to the agenda item.
All right, thank you, Adrian. Moving on then to the Housing Commission, two three-year terms through August 17th, 2026, and we have three applicants, Matthew Henrik, Juanita Otis, and Julieta Scott. Do we have anyone present to address us on any of these applications? See no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Okay.
No written input.
Okay. And finally here, the Long Range Planning Advisory Commission, we have one three-year term through July 1st, 2026. We have one applicant, Michael Rabagia. And do we have anyone here to address us on this application? No one here. Virtual?
No written input.
Okay. Then that brings us to the appointment for the Transit Advisory Board, one three-year term through July 30th, 2026, and one applicant. So I would entertain a motion for this, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we appoint Greg Orwell to the Transit Advisory Board for his one three-year term.
Second by Russell.
All right, we got a motion by Sprank, second by Russell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber. Aye. Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is resolution approving a proposed development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and 799 Main LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Farber.
A motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending City Council adopt the attached resolution approving a proposed development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and 799 Main LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. 799 Main LLC intends to rehabilitate the structure to revitalize the first-floor commercial space and create 36 new market-rate rental units in the upper stories. Project will utilize historic tax credits with remainder of the funding being a combination of private and public financing. 799 Main LLC is owned by Chris Miller. Chris Miller has successfully completed numerous historic redevelopment projects in the city of Dubuque, including 4044 Main Street and 210 Jones Street. The property located at 799 Main Street has had vacant upper-story residential space for several years. The first-floor commercial space has only been 30% occupied over the past several years. The key elements of the development agreement include the following. Number one, the developer will make a capital investment of approximately $12 million to rehabilitate the facility. Number two, the developer must create 36 market-rate residential rental units. Number three, the developer will receive 10 years of tax increment financing incentives in the form of semi-annual rebates. Tax increment financing incentives are estimated to not exceed $2,382,640. Number four, the city to award a downtown housing incentive grant in an amount of $360,000, which is $10,000 a unit times 36 units. Number five, the city to award a planning and design grant, a facade grant, and financial consultant grant not to cumulatively exceed $35,000. Number six, the city of Dubuque will amend the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District Plan to accommodate the issuance of tax increment financing incentives. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider City Council adopt the attached resolution approving a proposed development agreement by and between the city of Dubuque, Iowa and 799 Main LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. Do we have anyone present to address the council on this item? Seeing no one here, any virtual?
No.
Okay.
No input received.
All right, back to the table then for any discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
First off, I wanted to give a shout out to Chris Miller for his initiative and creativity on this building and how important it is for us to repurpose that part of Main Street to really encourage downtown living and to increase the vibrancy down there. So I just wanted to thank him for his interest and his endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Is anybody else? Mike, I do have a question, because I didn't notice this when we first read through the memo, but normally we have in the memo there that the developer in an agreement like this needs to take, is, has to take housing choice vouchers? Is that still a part of the development agreement?
Yes, I've got the development agreement up right now. I'll see if I can quickly find it, but yes, there's a clause in the development agreement.
Okay.
Which requires them to accept housing choice vouchers.
Okay. And I know that that's standard within our development agreements when we do these types of.
Yes.
Agreements here, but I was just curious if I, because I'm looking for it too and I can't find it in there, and I was just curious if anybody can point it to me so I know that before we vote on it. I do apologize that I missed that, and we're all now reading silently in front of everybody. And Jill, I see you standing back there too. If you happen to know if it's in there.
I think it's page nine, paragraph 5.2.
5.2.
10.5.2, you say?
I think so.
Housing vouchers. Thank you very much, Mr. Sprank. It is 5.2, Section 5. There it is right there. Okay. I just, I've known that that's, I missed it on the memo, and I just want to make sure it was there. Thank you very much. All right, any other questions or discussion on this? Okay. And I too just want to say thank you to everyone, Chris Miller as the developer and then the staff involved in putting this together. This is actually really important property for the city of Dubuque, it's right there when you come in our front door. So I think it's really a good agreement to be moving this forward and seeing some work being done in that area. All right, the motion is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber. Aye. Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Public hearing number two is John F. Kennedy Road and West 32nd Street Intersection Improvement Project.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
A motion by Resnick, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Sehoyes is recommending City Council approve the plan specifications, form of contract, estimated cost of $747,724.49 for the John F. Kennedy Road and West 32nd Street Intersection Improvement Project through the adoption of the enclosed resolution. And if you give him a minute, I do want to jump to the staff memo because there's a couple of points I probably should have included in my memo that I would like to capture out of that one. So this is the elements of the agreement to make those intersection improvements because it relates to adjoining development. So the city agrees to design and construct the required John F. Kennedy Road and West 32nd Street Intersection Improvements. The original estimated cost was at $600,000. The estimate was prepared based on a conceptual design of the intersection. The final design of the project and current bidding climate, the estimate for the project is increased to the $747,000. Requirements for the intersection improvements include, but are not limited to, turning lanes, lane widening, median modifications, traffic signals and controls, underground utilities, crosswalks, and curb ramps. The developer agrees to place $400,000 in escrow to be utilized for the construction of the required intersection improvements, including but not limited to engineering, right-of-way acquisition, and construction. The city agrees to make a good faith effort to construct the required intersection improvements so that they are operational by November 30th, 2023. The developer agrees to pay one-third, not to exceed $200,000, of the actual cost of the required intersection improvements, including but not limited to engineering, right-of-way acquisition, and construction. And the developer agrees to pay for 100% of the two private water main extensions to the property. And part of the funding for this project was money that was escrowed. So $62,500 of this will be funded from a 2015 agreement between the city of Dubuque and Kibbleham Farms LLC that was placed in an escrow account for the benefit of the city, be available to the city at the time that traffic signal construction is warranted. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider City Council approve the plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost of $747,724 for the John F. Kennedy Road and West 32nd Street Intersection Improvement Project. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one, anyone virtually?
No.
All right, thank you.
No input received.
All right, back to the table then for any discussion. Mr. Resnick.
Yes, thank you. And a couple of questions about, so the water and sewer improvement that they're going to furnish, now does that take it to the next property line then too, so that we can hook it up for others? Is that, is that all included?
I'm going to ask the city engineer Gus Sehoyes to step up to the microphone.
Good evening, Gus Sehoyes, city engineer. The water main extensions or just private water services that Matt Mulligan is asking us to do for him in conjunction with the street project, so we're just extending a four and a six-inch main into the two separate properties for him. So the water's already in that area, so.
Okay. So it's already connected to the next lot?
Right, right.
If we, all right, and while you're here, I heard the words "traffic signal," and seems to me I'm there, up there, you know, going past their lot, whack at, hack at a bucket of balls, but it just seems that that'd be a perfect spot for a roundabout. Now, I know a roundabout is more expensive. Could you tell me what the criteria are to build a roundabout rather than a traffic signal?
So we looked at that intersection very specifically for a roundabout, and because the location of the soccer complex and the proximity to the Northwest Arterial, our traffic engineers looked at it, and they thought that it'd be better signalized because of the connectability. We can connect the two signals with fiber, and they'll talk to each other, so they felt that, and their studies prove that, when the soccer complex exits, they're going to back all the way through the roundabout, plug the roundabout up, and the roundabout basically will be non-functioning. So that's what we looked at for the criteria because of that soccer complex and the exiting at a certain time, the roundabout won't function in this particular case as well as signalize the intersection.
I see. Great. Thank you for that information. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Other questions? Okay. All right, well, thank you, Gus, for your answers, and thank you all for your work on this. The motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber. Aye. Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
We will move on to public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the City Council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the City Council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the City Council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. All right, do we have any public input this evening? And as we, as we prepare, I think, yep, I see somebody, so come on up, Marty, you can come up first if you want. And as we prepare, just a couple notes. If there's, this is the one moment to be able to give any input on anything that's on the action item agenda, so make sure that now is the time to get up and speak to anything that's important to you on the action items. During the action item discussion, it's usually reserved just for the City Council, and if anybody has any specific questions for anyone about any public input they received or they gave or anything like that, then I would probably allow the, somebody to come back up and answer a specific question. But just so you know, this is the moment to be able to say what you want to say. So name and address, please. There's a little black button there on the side, the right side of the podium. It moves up and down, so you can adjust it to your height to make it more comfortable for you. And then, you know, as we, as we discuss things, I normally say, you know, I appreciate that we keep these conversations civil and respectful, and, thank you, Jenny, and, there we go, and just try to stick to facts and the items that are before us here. So with that said, please.
Thank you, Brad. My name is Marty Korfman, Martha Korfman. I live at 1185 North Booth Street here in Dubuque. And I would like to, first of all, thank all of you for your public service to our wonderful community, for your openness and communication, excellent communication with your concerned citizens like me who want to address you on this subject. I thank you, Laura. I thank you, Michael Van Milligan, for going on the tour, the guided tour that Tony was kind enough to put on. It was very short notice. I was pleasantly surprised any of you were able to go, so that worked out really well. It is a beautiful place out there. And so in addition to thanking you for that, for reading my, listening to me last time at the meeting and reading my lengthy email, I also wanted to just follow up a little bit with something that was called Back to My Memory that I had really forgotten about because, I don't know about you, but 2017 was a long time ago for me. And lots happened since then, but during that year, our community put together an incredibly amazing plan called Imagine Dubuque 2037 for long-term planning. And a lot of effort was put into really visionary planning to be the very, very best Dubuque that we can be. And our council at that time adopted some measures with regard to green infrastructure protection areas within our city, and also with regard to protecting sensitive natural areas from development. An actual quote from that Imagine Dubuque 2037 Plan on Environmental Policy is to ensure that, my understanding is the council at that time adopted these measures as the way, things that we want to do. And they said, "ensure a heightened development review when development occurs in green infrastructure protection areas, habitat cores, and other sensitive rural and natural areas." And then there's also a portion in there that talks about green infrastructure protection areas. And I think everything we are talking about here just goes absolutely hand in hand with that planning that other people did in 2017 to help us go. And so, you know, this really begins, I think, our work together to do everything that we can to ensure that our children and grandchildren and great-grandchildren inherit just as beautiful of a Dubuque as what we have, and I don't want them never to see any of these birds ever where they live. So I want to be a part of protecting that. I also want to mention that the spirit of public-private partnership that we have in our community that is so incredibly strong, I would bring to mind the Voices of the Warehouse and subsequent millwork district rejuvenation, as well as the Amherst River Center, huge visionary projects nobody ever imagined. I think we can do something like this. I think we can make a grassland preserve, and maybe we can do a lot better with future development and long-term planning. And if I, if we could be, I would love to be a flagship for this kind of thing in our city where everybody else in Iowa looks to us for what they want, what they should do in their own communities. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Marty, for your comments. Come on up.
I'm Ken Kiss at 1684 Monse Court. I want to thank Mayor Kavanaugh and the City Council for allowing us to discuss about this grassland proposal today. I'm the president of Dubuque Audubon, and we had sent in a proposal that I think you've spread to the council. And has everybody seen the picture of the layout as well? Okay. So, good. So we know that you want to use that land for development, so we thought, what could we do to compromise? And we thought if we could take half that area, that larger area, that that would be enough for the, protect the bobolinks and still allow expansion. And also, I know you have at least one development out there that's vacant, so if that could be reutilized, that would be another option where you wouldn't have to take out any new So I guess, I think the mayor had some question as why requesting this area? And so originally, we thought the only large area for bobolinks was behind Plaza Drive. But when that occurred, Tony Moline, who's our field director, he did a survey, and he found this area that was populated with bobolinks. And also, at the same time, I heard from an Audubon member to check out this area that there's bobolinks there. So that's why we requested that if we could set aside part of this property as a grassland preserve, that it would be great. And I think you had some questions as to, is there any other areas in the county? In the areas we cover, the county parks, we have seen very few bobolinks. Typically, they're taller grassland. The bobolinks kind of prefer the medium grassland, like you're keeping it out there. So also, I reached out to the Iowa DNR, and what is ideal habitat for the bobolinks? So Anna Buckart, who's the DNR avian ecologist, gave me this criteria, that they prefer a square area versus a long skinny area, because they like to be 50 meters from the border of a grassland to nest. They prefer medium to tall grassland with a high percentage of grass and a few forbs. I think it's more like the medium because we have tall grasslands in our parks, and the bobolinks have disappeared. The size of the field is dependent on the surrounding habitat. They like an open area with not trees around. And then, you know, a very key object is not to mow between May 1st and July 15th during the breeding season. So there's some information that indicates you need 25 acres, but it plays out differently in different scenarios. So that's some of the criteria that this grassland does meet, so that's probably why the bobolinks are attracted there. Also, I just might add that you've got that nice trail out there, the Granger Creek Nature Trail. It looks like to me it's underutilized. Think if you could tie that in with a grassland preserve, you could get birders to use that trail as well and just bring people to the area. And it's not that far from the Mines of Spain. People visiting Mines of Spain could easily come up to that area and check out the bobolinks as well. So that's our main concern, the bobolinks. Other grassland birds are going to use it, but the bobolinks are a long-range migrator. And there's lots of studies being done on migration, but they come from the middle or even further down South America, and they start nesting in Iowa and all the way up into Canada. So they're strictly a grassland bird. So that's what we're, you know, looking to really protect. We also have, one of our members is hired a professor, Thomas Rosberg, from Drake University, and he's going to come in and just document, well, what are the characteristics of this prairie? Why are the bobolinks attracted to it? What makes it special?[1665.71] And then, you know, a very key object is not to mow between May 1st and July 15th during the breeding season. So there's some information that indicates you need 25 acres, but it plays out differently in different scenarios. So that's some of the criteria that this grassland does meet, so that's probably why the bobolinks are attracted there. Also, I just might add that you've got that nice trail out there, the Granger Creek Nature Trail, it looks like to me it's underutilized. Think if you could tie that in with a grassland preserve, you could get birders to use that trail as well, and just bring people to the area. And it's not that far from the Mines of Spain. People visiting Mines of Spain could easily come up to that area and check out the bobolinks as well. So that's our main concern, the bobolinks, other grassland birds are going to use it, but the bobolinks are a long-range migrator. And there's lots of studies being done on migration, but they come from the middle or even further down South America, and they start nesting in Iowa and all the way up into Canada. So they're strictly a grassland bird. So that's what we're, you know, looking to really protect. We also have, one of our members is hired a professor, Thomas Rosberg from Drake University, and he's going to come in and just document, well, what are the characteristics of this prairie? Why are the bobolinks attracted to it? What makes it special? So, not in question zone.
Excellent. All right, thank you very much Ken for your comments. Others?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Sarah Ellerbeck. I live at 4851 Camelot Drive, and I want to thank you all very much for adding this to your agenda. This evening, I was at the June 20th meeting, and I have to compliment you, you guys run an efficient type meeting. I'm incredibly impressed how, how much you guys get done. I just wanted to bring up, I had seen the article on the front page of the Telegraph Herald that they were going to talk about this tonight, and I remembered something that you had said, Mayor Kavanaugh, it was so important to you at the last meeting, that right after you talked about the Switch LLC development, you took a sidebar, and you said, and I quote, "We want to build a city that people want to move to and stay in for decades, way past the time we're all dead. We have to think about what that means as we go forward." Now, I'm a mother of a millennial, and I'm, she was a biology major up in Minnesota, and I am a mother of a Gen Z-er who's still in college forever. And I've also been a college professor now for 17 years, and I have seen the winds of change. These kids, these future Dubukers, they want clean water to drink, clean air to breathe, and a community that cares about the environment. They really do care. And I think that all of these proposals are very reasonable. I went out to the area myself to show some out-of-town guests the bobolinks, it was very exciting. And the architecture of the developments that are out there are, is absolutely gorgeous. I wish I worked in a nice building like that. But it would also be wonderful to take my lunch break and walk around a nice grassland area and join up with the trail. I don't see in any scenario where these are contraindicated. I noticed in the paper, again, I'm going to quote you sir, that you said, "I can't imagine a scenario where I go and vote to turn this land into a grassland preserve." I'm hoping that after tonight, that maybe you can imagine a scenario, and that maybe some of your colleagues here will also. Thank you very much for your time and your work.
Thank you Sarah for your comments. Others? All right, while people think about it, do we have any virtual input tonight? Okay.
We do have some written input that has been received regarding Action Item Number Five, Clark Schultz of 2925 Burlington Street, Kristen Anderson-Briker and John Anderson-Briker of 903 Mer Street, and Joanne Ellie of 510 Prince Road Street, all submitted written input that's been uploaded to that agenda item.
All right, thank you Adrienne. All right, yeah, come on up.
Hi, my name is Stormy Mokel. I am at 1756 Wood Street. I wasn't planning on coming up here and speaking this evening. I did send you all an email a little late today, but I finally got it done. I own a business here in Dubuque, I've owned one for 20 years downtown, outside the Lines Art Gallery, and I am one of the first people that tourists see when they come to our city. And when I have conversations with tourists, I meet people from all over the world. The one thing that draws them to Dubuque is our natural beauty. Did we not have the Mississippi River here? These people wouldn't be coming here. If we didn't have the Mines of Spain here, these people wouldn't be coming here. That includes all of the flora and the fauna. These people don't come here to go to Kohl's, they don't come here to go to TJ Maxx, maybe somebody from Eppworth or something, but, you know, they come here because they want to see what we have to offer with our natural beauty. They go to the arboretum, they visit our parks, Eagle Point. So I want you all to take that into consideration, because I know oftentimes, things come down to dollars and cents, but there's value in our land, in our natural beauty. And it does bring in dollars and cents when you look at the tourism. So if you have to see things that way, please look at it from the view of tourism. Thank you.
Thank you Stormy for your comments. Anyone else? Give you a last call here. Okay. All right, then we can go ahead and move on to action items, please Adrienne.
Action Item Number One is Moody's Upgrade of City of Dubuque's Issuer Rating and Bonds. Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Farber.
I move that we hear the presentation and receive and file.
Second. Got a motion by Farber, second by Resnick. Mike, coming to you.
Yes. Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. And on the next agenda item, you're going to hear a presentation on our bond issuance, and that presentation is going to be from our Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson, and from our municipal bond advisory firm Independent Public Advisors, Tiana Poohler. And they'll tell you a little more about the results of one of the things I'm going to mention to you now, and that's this agenda item. So recognizing the tremendous fiscal stewardship of the mayor and city council, I'm pleased to advise you, and I'll quote from the document that Moody's issued as they reviewed our bond rating, says Moody's Investor Services has upgraded, and keyword there is upgraded, "The City of Dubuque, Iowa's issuer rating and outstanding general obligation unlimited tax bonds to AA2 from AA3, as well as its outstanding moral obligation sales tax increment revenue bonds, senior bond series 2015A to A1 from A2." And what was their rationale for doing that upgrade of the city bond rating? They say the issuer rating was upgraded to AA2 because the city has strong financial operations and ample revenue raising flexibility, which has resulted in steadily improved available fund balances and cash. The city serves as a regional economic center, and its regional economic growth rate has outpaced the nation over the past five years. The city's local economy is likely to remain strong because of its mix of commercial and industrial industries, stable population, and steady tax-based growth. Residents' wealth and income ratios are a little below rated peers, in part because of a large student population. Leverage is elevated and could grow further because of outstanding capital needs. So I guess I'll just repeat my compliments to the mayor and council on their fiscal stewardship, which has led to the upgrading of our bond rating. And the direct impact of that is when we issue debt, we get a better interest rate than other communities, because that's how the buyers of the debt judge how much, what they're going to charge, pay as an interest rate, or I'm sorry, charge as an interest rate. And the higher your bond rating, the lower your interest rate. And so, for me, that ends this agenda item, and as you move into the next one, you'll hear from the real financial experts.
Thank you. Ms. Farber?
Yeah, so back at you Mike for the due diligence and the hard work that was done in order to get this rating, because I know it's not an easy task to go through all those interviews and all the questionnaires, et cetera. So kudos to the team and also to Mike and the entire staff. I do have a question about the Dollar and Cents brochure that we normally have. Is there an opportunity or a section where we could actually put our rating from Moody's, or D and B if you will, into that brochure? Because we use this for a significant marketing tool, and it might be kind of a nice addition to kind of show off this increase or just our general rating, because it is one of the most solid ratings for a municipality of our size.
I couldn't agree with you more, and the timing was a little awkward. So, you know, every year, after the mayor and city council complete the budget process, part of our transparency is we create this four-page Dollar and Cents document, which talks about our tax rates, our fees, our amount of debt, our amount of reserves, and then we mail it to every home and business in town. And the day we got this upgrade, I contacted the Public Information Officer, and I said, "I know we're just about to mail that document, is it too late to change it to insert this additional information?" And he said, "Yes, it's too late." Before the mailing, however, we're still going to modify the document, so as we use it for other purposes, it will have the modified information in it.
And virtually, it'll be somehow annotated?
And on the website, it will have the upgraded version.
Well, thank you for great minds thinking alike here from the city council and from the city staff. It's just kudos to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Farber. Mr. Resnick?
Thank you. So I'm so glad that we have this happening, it's really deserved good news. Dollars and cents to me, that publication is like our financial report card. And it, I appreciate that we have this report card to send to the citizens. It's not always good, but it has been, and we want to make sure it remains on the positive side. What I wanted to talk about is that spending money often gets all the headlines and generates all the excitement. But I just want to point out that saving money has a lot of benefits, and this is one of them. So when we get to budget, and we say, "Wouldn't it be nice," or "We need to do this, this would make life much better here for citizens of Dubuque," I mean, that is, I mean, that's a vital point, but it's also a vital point to say, by not doing that, we are also making some great things happen in Dubuque, including this Moody's upgrade. So I'm excited about this, that we are very careful with what we're doing with the citizen finances. Because when we vote to spend money, you know, it's not us, we're voting to spend citizen money. And we need to keep that in mind, and I think we have been. I appreciate that Moody's recognizes all the good work. We say, "Let's do this," or "We will do this," and city staff actually does it and makes it happen. So thank you very much to city staff, and let's keep it going council. Thank you. Thank you Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick? Yeah, Ms. Wethel?
I'd just like to echo a little bit. I've been on council now for 15 months, and in those 15 months, I think there's been some pretty significant decisions that we as a council have made. But certainly for decades before this council, there's been a lot of people that care about their city enough to be wise with how money is spent. And so, I hope that taxpayers know that when we make these decisions, we're thoughtful for it for many reasons, but in the end, this is a good future for all of our city and generations to come. So kudos to all of my colleagues and those who have been in this position before.
Thank you Ms. Wethel.
Well, I, you know, this is great news. I mean, this is, this is really important and very good news. And it also is, it's good to see that the deliberation that takes us so long up here actually pays off in this way. I think it's important that the decisions that we make are carefully thought out, and are done with the best interests of everyone in mind. And I think that, you know, we had, we kind of started this discussion already during the work session today, you know, we're, this is a city that's responsible with people's money, and we pay very close attention to what is going on, and I really appreciate that. And I appreciate that Moody's sees that and we've, we've been able to accomplish this. So with that said, I know we're going to be talking a little bit more about it, so unless there's any other comments, the motion is to receive and file this. Adrienne, would you call the roll, please?
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Action Item Number Two is Proceedings for Directing Sale of Not to Exceed $6,250,000 Taxable General Obligation Bond Series 2023A in Awarding Bonds to Best Bitter.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Resnick?
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Wethel. Mike, please.
Thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief Financial Officer Jennifer Larson recommends city council approval of the suggested proceedings for directing the sale. This is the correct one, Jennifer? Is this the correct one for this agenda item? Of not to exceed $6,250,000 of taxable general obligation bond series 2023A in awarding bonds to the best bidder. The bond sale was held this morning at 10:00 a.m., and the results will be brought to you here shortly. In conjunction with the bond sale, the City of Dubuque was issued a credit opinion by Moody's Investor Services. Moody's Investor Services upgraded the City of Dubuque, Iowa's issuer rating and outstanding general obligation on unlimited tax bonds to AA2 from AA3, as well as its outstanding moral obligation sales tax increment revenue bonds, senior bond series 2015A to A1 from A2. Goes on, and the quote from the document of Moody's was, "The issuer rating was upgraded to AA2 because the city has strong financial operations and ample revenue raising flexibility, which has resulted in steadily improved available fund balance and cash. The city serves as a regional economic center, and its regional economic growth rate has outpaced the nation over the past five years. The city's local economy is likely to remain strong because of its mix of commercial and industrial industries, stable population, and steady tax-based growth. Resident wealth and income ratios are a little below rated peers, in part because of a large student population. Leverage is elevated and could grow further because of outstanding capital needs," close quotes. I concur with the recommendation and respect the request mayor and city council approval of what is about to be reported on.
Good evening, mayor and council and staff. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Tiana Poohler from Independent Public Advisors, the city's financial advisor. Congratulations on your well-earned rating upgrade. The one thing that I would add to what's already been discussed is that, I want to say, back in February, Moody's went through a recalibration of their ratings. They sort of changed the way they interpreted some data. And at that time, the city had no change in their rating, but some cities actually did see a downgrade with just the way the city decided, or just the way Moody's redid their methodology. So this upgrade, not only is it well-deserved, but it's actually coming at a time when, a few months ago, there were some of your peers that may have gotten downgraded due to a methodology change. So you went through that very well, and now you also have an upgrade based on, you know, as we noted, the strong performance financially and economically. So it sounds like you're already very aware that that's something that you should be proud of, but I just wanted to, to bring you that context as well. But today, we did take bids on about $6.1 million, and you should have the results of those bids in front of you. Robert W. Baird represented the lowest bid with a true interest cost of 4.8%. This is a taxable rate, so that is why, you know, it's higher than what you would have seen on a tax-exempt basis. The Baird Syndicate had quite a few banks in it, so overall, there were four bids, but in total, there were 31 banks involved in those four bids across 17 states. During the planning stage, we had accounted for a true interest cost of 5.37%. Your actual was 4.82%, so quite a bit lower. Your average annual debt service is about $21,000 lower than what we had planned for initially. And a lot of that has to do with just trying to be conservative during the planning stages. The market was a lot more volatile during this season that we are selling in than it had been in the past. And you actually got about $56,000 more in proceeds to spend than we had originally planned for as well. One of the things that I will note here is that if you kind of look at your bids, the next bid after that was 12 basis points higher, and the highest bid was 37 basis points higher. So this was, you know, an interesting day in the market, but as you're talking about the fact that your AA2 rating affords you opportunities, it's really difficult to sort of compare what a AA1, or a AA2, or 3 might price at. But I will say, on this particular bond issue, every basis point is worth $5,000 on a present value basis. So just between your high bid and your low bid, that's a savings of $199,000. And so what I can say about that is that while it can be difficult to sort of tease out the differences on a granular level between a AA2 and a AA1, or a AA3, what I can say is that the higher your rating, the more bids you're going to receive. And you can see today that having more people at the table was important, it saved you real money. In those four bids, there's a wide variety of, of numbers that you saw there. So I think that sometimes it's not always necessarily in the rate you get, but it can also be in who's at the table looking at your bonds. And the higher your rating, the more people that will be. And so congratulations once again. I am open to any questions you might have, but I would certainly recommend that you award to Baird and proceed with the sale.
Tiana, do we have any questions or discussion here?
Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Wethel?
I know that we always need to look to the future of what we can do better. And so although I'm very pleased with where we're at today and the news that we've received, do you have any specific recommendations that you could share, or even broader ones regarding how we as a council can approach this to continue to be successful?
Well, I will point out what Moody's actually said when it comes to your rating. They said that to increase your rating, you could moderate your debt burden. They said that to increase your rating, you could moderate your debt burden and see more economic activity that improves resident income. Things to, that would move your rating down would be a decline in reserves or increased leverage. So some of that, you have very little control over in the short term. But as, you know, the things that I heard you talking about today, Dubuque, you know, I work with a lot of places and have been in the business for 20-some years, and I would say that you're probably my client that's the most minded toward economic development. I mean, you are really focused on that, and it's not something that happens overnight. But as Moody's has, you know, remarked, that driving economy and your leader in the area in that way has improved. And so I would say, keep doing those things. And I think that in the way that you manage your city, just for fiscal responsibility in general, on a year-to-year basis, is going to result eventually in even better rating outcomes. There is the reality of the fact that sometimes Moody's sort of doesn't rate communities that don't have a certain amount of valuation above a certain level. But I wouldn't let that deter you. I'd really just sort of keep doing what you're doing. Moody's has recognized it. But I think it's important to acknowledge that you're doing those things just out of good stewardship of your city, and Moody's is recognizing it. So I think if you continue to do what you know to do and what you've all done well, things will only improve.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, Tiana, let me say to you personally, thank you very much for being here tonight and providing us with this information. It was, it's incredibly helpful to hear this straight from you, because you do a lot of work with us on this subject, and it really is very helpful to get a larger context of what this really means and how this, how good this actually is for the city of Dubuque. So thank you very much for your recommendation and for the information.
Absolutely. My pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Well, if there is nothing else, the motion is to receive and file and adopt the resolution which authorizes and approves the loan agreement. So I see no further comment. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Action item number three is investment policy certificate of excellence award.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Chief financial officer Jennifer Larson is transmitting the notification of the city of Dubuque receiving the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada's 2023 Investment Policy Certificate of Excellence Award for the city's comprehensive investment policy.
Thank you, Mike. Any comments? Jen, I see your face, Jenny. I know you don't want to say anything. That's fine. I'm not putting you on the spot tonight. Don't worry. Don't worry. Any other comments? I think we need to say congratulations again. Yes, absolutely. I mean, this, I like that the first four items here are all basically celebrating Jenny Larson and her entire finance and budget department. So, you know, we say oftentimes, when you join us here and we talk about these issues that are budget-related and finance-related, how important the work is you're doing and how great that work is, and it is always nice to be recognized for this. And you are multiple times a year, and we really appreciate that. We're doing a great job. And, you know, just, I've been stuck a little bit on something Tiana just said, this idea of really kind of stay the course. It's not an easy thing to do all the time. You get jumpy, you want to change things, you want to start moving around and figuring out what else you can do. But it actually, it's an interesting, it's not so much a juxtaposition, but it's how we fit these things together with what we're about to talk about next, because I think all of that is something that we're constantly focused on. And the way that we do that is to be as responsible as possible. And thank you very much for the work that you and your department are doing, Jenny and Mike and everybody here in the city. All right. Motion is to receive and file. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Action item number four is submission of fiscal year ended June 30, 2022, annual comprehensive financial report and results of the 2022 financial statement audit, including required communications.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
I ask to receive and file and view the presentation.
Second by Rousell.
Motion by Wethel, second by Rousell. Jenny, turn it over to you.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Jennifer Larson, chief financial officer for the city. I am here tonight to present the fiscal year '22 audit to city council. So every year, the city has a financial audit performed annually. This is required by the municipal oversight law and governmental auditing standards. Auditors examine the city's financial records, and it's, the audit is conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. The report is rendered by an independent auditor of how appropriate financial statements depict its financial condition and results of its operation. And of course, it's performed by persons not in any way affiliated with the city in order to ensure complete objectivity and professionalism. So there are four different types of independent auditor's opinions. We have unmodified opinion, so this is where the statements are presented fairly, the financial position and the results of operations of the government unit on a basis consistent with prior years. It's also called the clean opinion. Then there's the modified opinion, so it's like unmodified opinion, but there's some exceptions to generally accepted accounting principles, which are clearly explained in the auditor's opinion. Then there's an adverse opinion, which is considered a bad opinion. So it states the financial statements do not fairly present the financial position and results of operation of the governmental unit, and the opinion would include the reasons for that adverse opinion. And finally, there's a disclaimer of opinion where the auditor cannot render an opinion, usually because the financial records are incomplete or the scope of the audit is too Our auditors also perform compliance audits in which the auditor, sorry, auditor reviews operations in terms of compliance with various laws and regulations regarding grants and financial operations. And those compliance audits have always been a vital part of governmental audits. So what are the benefits of an audit? The audit provides a professional opinion of the financial condition of the government unit. The audit, audited financial statements provide reliable financial information to evaluate the financial health and stability of the governmental unit. The auditors also provide recommendations to strengthen and improve the management and efficiency of the governmental unit. And audits also ensure that the local government is in compliance with all legal provisions. So we did change auditors. We went out for request for proposal in March of 2022. In June of 2022, we selected Forvis LLP as the city's audit firm. We were previously with Ida Bailey LLP for many years prior to Forvis. So 2022 was the first audit performed by Forvis. Our audit results, we did receive the highest audit opinion, which is unmodified, also known as the clean audit. Our financial statements are materially accurate. We had no disagreements with the auditors, and all proposed material audit adjustments were made. So jumping into the city's financial statements, the first set of financial statements that we will discuss are government-wide financial statements. Those include the statement of net position and the statement of activities. So these two statements present a longer-term focus on the city's financial health. They're intended to present the annual costs of providing governmental services. And a positive net position shown at the bottom of the statement of net position indicates the cost of providing services has been funded through the date of the financials. The statement of net position looks at the city's assets and liabilities, and the difference between the two are considered net assets. It is essentially the balance sheet for government financial statements. This is what funds the city would have left over after all other obligations and liabilities are met, and it's a quick reference to what money the city has. Assets are presented in order of liquidity. Liabilities are reported in order of maturity. Deferred inflows and outflows represent transactions made in the current period that will affect cash flows in future periods. The statement of activities lists the revenues and expenditures of the city, and the statement activities would be the equivalent of an income statement used in the business world. So for the city of Dubuque, our governmental activities increased the city's net position by 18.1 million. Charges for services increased by 2.2 million, and gaming revenues increased by 4 million. Overall expenditures decreased by 3.3 million. This excludes any transfers out to business-type activities. And then business-type activities increased the city's net position by 17.1 million. Total expenses increased by 1.9 million. Charges for services increased by 2.5 million. Looking specifically at general fund revenue, so the general fund is the city's primary operating fund. It accounts for all financial resources of the general government, except those required to be accounted for in another fund. So of the general fund revenues, taxes make up the largest piece of revenue for the city at 51%, followed by charges for service, and then, sorry, leases, fuel, sales, and ambulance fees. And then taxes is broken out in the next slide. So this chart shows the breakdown of different taxes within the tax revenue line for the past three years. Property tax is the largest, followed by local option sales tax and franchise fees. Fiscal year '22 saw an increase of 3.2 million from fiscal year '21. Property tax increased 492,000. Franchise fees increased 1.1 million, and local option sales tax increased $705,000. This slide shows the different components of general fund revenue and their three-year history. Revenue as a whole has been fairly consistent with small increases and/or decreases within the different components. Overall general fund revenue in fiscal year '22 increased 9.3 million over '21. Taxes increased 3.2 million. Charges for services increased 2.6 million. Interest and fines decreased 2.6 million. Gaming increased 3.9 million, and intergovernmental revenues increased 2 million. Looking at general fund expenditures, public safety makes up 46%, followed by culture and recreation at 21%. Public works is 11%. General government, 10%. Community and economic development, 7%. And finally, health and social services, 1%. This chart shows the breakdown of expenditures over the past three years. In fiscal year 2022, we saw increases in public safety of 2.2 million, public works increase of 2.2 million, and culture and recreation an increase of 2.7 million. Expenditures in total increased by approximately 7.6 million from fiscal year '21. This chart shows a comparison of unassigned general fund balances as compared to annual expenditures. So it shows the city's ability to cover costs from year-end until tax revenues are received. The city's budget guideline is to maintain at least 20%. The city had 53.9% unassigned fund balance as of June 30, 2022. So this excludes transfers out from the general fund, and the general fund's transfers out mostly consist of transfers to transit section eight and debt service. This chart shows the city's net investment in capital assets. So this is the city's investment after any outstanding debt is applied and depreciation is accounted for. It shows both governmental activities and business-type activities, and governmental activities has been fairly consistent each year, as you can see in the chart, and business-type activities has been steadily increasing. This shows the city's total OPEB liability and net pension liability. So OPEB liability is the retiree healthcare, and then the net pension liability includes IFRS and MFPRSI. So we're required to show these liabilities in our financial statements. And again, just looking at what our actual audit results were, reminder, we received an unmodified audit opinion. Compliance audit results, there are three levels of audit deficiencies. So we, there could be material weaknesses, which is the highest level, material adjustments identified, significant deficiency, which does not rise to the material level, but still something those charged with governance should be aware of. Controlled deficiency is the lowest level, compensating controls in place to mitigate likelihood of a material misstatement. So reviewing previous audit results, in 2021, we had an unmodified audit opinion and one significant deficiency over financial reporting. In 2020, again, an unmodified audit opinion, one material weakness over financial reporting. In 2019, unmodified audit opinion, one material weakness over financial reporting, three material weaknesses, and one significant deficiency over federal awards. Looking at fiscal year 2022's compliance audit results, we did have a material weakness over restatement of prior year financial statements. Those three restatements were related to GASB 9, cash flows reporting, GASB 84, fiduciary activities, workers' compensation fund claims classification. I'll go into these further in a second, but we had no significant deficiencies identified in fiscal year '23. So looking at the first restatement, which was GASB statement number nine, that has to do with reporting cash flows of proprietary and non-expendable trust funds and governmental entities that use proprietary fund accounting. That defines cash and cash equivalents to include investments which have an original maturity of three months or less. So during fiscal year 2022, the city corrected beginning cash and cash equivalents at July 1, 2021, to exclude investments not meeting its cash equivalence definition. So this restatement impacted only water and stormwater funds, and it represents those funds' revenue bond reserves. So 525,000 in water and 2,080,000 in stormwater. The next restatement was related to GASB statement number 84, which is fiduciary activities, and it changed the definition, criteria, and reporting of fiduciary activities, as well as redefined various fiduciary fund types and changed fund type terminology. So during the audit, it was determined the cable equipment fund, previously reported as a custodial fund, does not meet the definition of a fiduciary activity because the funds can be used for city purposes under Iowa code section 477A 7.4. So the cable equipment fund has been moved to a sub-fund in the general fund as of July 1, 2021. And the final restatement has to do with workers' compensation reserve restatement. Police and fire injury claims are required to be charged to the general fund by Iowa code. During fiscal years '21 and '22, police and fire injury claims were incorrectly charged to the workers' compensation reserve fund. There was a restatement to move 973,070 of fund balance from the general fund to the workers' compensation internal service fund. And then this change also resulted in restatement of beginning of cash and cash equivalents reported in the cash flow statement for the internal service fund. Under the compliance audit results, we had unmodified opinion for all major federal programs, and we had no findings for compliance for each major federal program that was reported, which is great news. And that's the end of my presentation on the fiscal year '22 audit. I'm available for questions, and Forvis partner Jessica Richter is also available online, so.
Great. Thank you, Jenny. Appreciate that. Questions? Comments? Other than a little, I don't know if I'm happy with the picture you chose there. I don't like thinking about snow in the middle of the summertime, you know? But that's okay, Jenny. Don't worry about that. So questions or comments about the audit presentation? I mean, I know we talked about the last item, but I mean, that's pretty incredible to have no findings in those categories and an unmodified opinion. I mean, even just the federal category alone you were talking about, you know, you think about the amount of work that goes, of the money flowing in and out of all these different sources that the city of Dubuque uses. I mean, that's an incredible audit result. So congratulations to everybody involved. Thank you very much. Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Jenny. The motion here then is to receive and file and hear that presentation. So Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Action item number five is Dubuque Audubon Society Proposal for Grassland Preserve.
Mr. Mayor.
But just so everybody knows the full context of this, I want to make sure that I have a chance to read some of this to you. So, thank you again to everybody who reached out to us about this, especially Ken Kiss and the members of the Audubon Society. I've really had some great discussions in this past week on this topic, and I appreciate that. So I remain completely open to discussing this topic and look forward to hearing my council colleagues' thoughts on the matter, and continue to look forward to hearing thoughts of community members. First, I want to provide some context on how this item came to be included in tonight's agenda. I think it's really important that all of us understand the process we undertake as a city council and a city of Dubuque staff when it comes to meetings and the actions within those meetings. So Ken Kiss of the Audubon Society reached out to me last week and asked for this proposal to be on the agenda as an agenda item. When he did so, the decision to add the item to the agenda was entirely up to me as mayor, and that's provided within Iowa Code and our city code as well. But still, placing an item on the agenda in this way is not our usual operating procedure. Normally, a plan such as this one outlined in the Audubon Society's letter would have gone through a thorough planning process with city of Dubuque staff and would be identified as a priority set by the city council. So, please feel free to see a list of our current goals and priorities. There's actually lists in the back of the room here, and then also online at the city of Dubuque website. In order for city staff to spend any real time and resources on any issue, it really does need to be identified as a goal or priority by this city council. I say all this to clarify that I see tonight's meeting as a starting point for this discussion. The city council does not have all the information they need to make a final decision tonight on this item. As we talk through this, I suggest to my council colleagues here at the desk that if we want city staff to expend the time and the resources it'll take to make this project or one like it a reality on city of Dubuque land, that I think we, as a council, need to make it one of our goals and priorities for the next fiscal year and discuss it when goal-setting comes next month. The city council holds goal-setting sessions every year in August, and these are intensive, comprehensive sessions. So for example, last year, we started with over a hundred twenty potential priorities and then finally landed on the current twelve priorities after four nights of discussion and negotiation. Goals and priorities are driven by community input, so I strongly encourage everyone interested in this topic to let city council members know before our goal-setting begins on August twenty-second next month, if you do want this plan to be identified as a priority for the upcoming year. While the request from the Audubon Society on tonight's agenda is not included in our identified goals and priorities for this year, I decided to place it on the agenda at Ken's request because I think it's important to begin a full and public conversation on this topic so we can find a way forward that works best for our entire community. Even if this plan does not make it to the top of the city Dubuque priority list this coming year, the conversation around this plan is not just limited to what the city of Dubuque government can do. It's far more inclusive than that, and I for one am glad that we are here to begin that conversation in earnest tonight. With all that said, I do want to share some of my opening thoughts with my colleagues here at the desk and then everyone else who has joined us here. First, the idea of creating a grassland preserve in the Dubuque area sounds like a very good one to me. Community members have shared evidence that we have migratory birds nesting on land in Dubuque, and I agree, we all should identify ways to help these birds and other wildlife in our area flourish. So far, it appears to me we are very early in this community conversation about how to accomplish this. I know there is much that we, that I don't know about this topic, and it appears that there are still many unanswered questions. So for instance, some of this was mentioned already tonight, but I'm going to just read this here. So for instance, when this topic was first presented to the city council by three concerned birders, they reported the land behind Asbury Plaza was the only place in our region where anyone has seen these species of birds. Then, when the topic came up in recent weeks, it was reported that the tech park site also housed these species of birds. So could this mean that there are actually more sites where we might find these birds? What is it about these sites that draws the birds to them? How many acres do the birds need for nesting grounds? What are the best practices for land management that will make land attractive for these birds? These and other questions are on my mind as we explore this issue further, and I know these questions are shared by others. Last week, when I spoke to Ken, we had a nice discussion on the phone last week and about the Audubon Society proposal that is before us tonight, I did tell him directly that I don't think the proposed parcel of land in the tech park is the right candidate for this project. I want to be upfront about this, about my thoughts on this, and here's why I currently take this position. Some have suggested that this land has been owned by the city for many years and has remained undeveloped. While this is true, we are seeing evidence that development is on the rise in Dubuque. Recent examples of land that has been vacant for many years and now has plans for development include the Talon Development behind Asbury Plaza, housing on Radford Road, development on the Northwest Arterial, development in the Port of Dubuque, and multiple other vacant, long vacant plots of land throughout the city. Finally, there actually have been recent numerous inquiries for development on the lots left within the tech park itself. This trend is all very new for Dubuque. We haven't experienced development and growth for quite some time, and it's coming with growing pains that none of us have really been accustomed to. Not the least of which is the question of how we balance development and growth with the natural environment that we have here in the Dubuque region. A main challenge with this particular site in the tech park is that the city of Dubuque is running low on developable land owned by the city that is graded, served by utilities, and ready for immediate development. And keep in mind, when I say "city," I do mean the people of Dubuque, because that's who owns this land. And with all that said, there are two questions I see as important for centering all of us during the many conversations that we have ahead on this topic. First, what land, public or private, could be a good candidate for grassland preserves within our region? And second, is it possible to identify best practices for land management for all landowners, private and public, related to migratory birds? And if so, what are they, and how can we all be educated on these practices most effectively? So regarding the first question, earlier I had a list of questions that I laid out, and I think those are important ones to answer, and as I mentioned, Mr. Kiss and others started to answer those tonight. But from what I've seen so far, the Dubuque Audubon Society and the concerned citizens like you all that are here tonight and are in the best position to organize the right people, find the answers to these and other important questions, and begin to educate the Dubuque community on this topic. That includes educating us at this desk and other elected and appointed leaders. The second question may actually be where we all have the most ability to create the biggest impact. If it is possible to identify land management practices that promote nesting and then provide the entire community with education on this, this community could exponentially increase the amount of land attractive to migratory birds in the Dubuque region. Land that does sit vacant for any length of time could actually become a de facto grassland preserve, like this one in the tech park has, and education like this could encourage the creation of more official preserves on private and public land alike. What I hope I'm conveying to you here is my openness to find a solution to the concerns that people have raised to this council. While I'm not certain that what the best role for city government is in this equation, I am confident that we can find a way forward as a broader Dubuque community that will be the best possible solution for everyone. So once again, I sincerely appreciate everyone's communication with me and the rest of the city council on this issue, and I really do look forward to continuing this discussion with others tonight and beyond. So with that said, I'll open it up for any other discussion from other council members. Mr. Resnick.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Before I start, I just want to clarify with the city attorney. Now, we can talk with council members about agenda items individually, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, so if I wanted to call up Rick Jones and say, "What do you think about this or that?" That's not a big deal, but we don't talk to them, you know, we don't send them mass email or anything like that.
So the, what is supposed to, what you can't do is you can't have serial meetings, you can't do deliberation outside of meetings, and you can't have anything that would violate the quorum or having an open meeting outside of public notice.
But a conversation is fine with an individual. First of all, Mayor, thank you for your comments. Well thought out and definitely has an opinion, a well-thought-out opinion behind it. I wanted to mention that our city website has a people planning and partnerships page that talks about what we can do with this situation. Now, about the specific, let me talk about this specific situation out of the technology park first. And so, as you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the citizens paid for and invested millions of dollars to develop that area, and the city council, I feel, made a pact with the citizens that said, "We are investing your money so that we're going to bring jobs and more development to the city of Dubuque." And, and that's what I think is planned for. Now, I still think it can be a bridge to the next thing, because we do have some unused land right now, which could be used as a bridge, as I mentioned. And to talk about planning, it's tough. We want to be nimble, but it would be very tough to all of a sudden say, "Hey, let's, yeah, that's a great idea, let's do it." So let's plan. And partnership, I don't know a better partner than the Audubon Society in this, for this. So what I'm hoping that we could do is that the Audubon Society, as you mentioned, take the reins a little bit and see what we can do to find a property or develop a property for, that they would purchase. Because if we don't prioritize them, the competition is tough in these priorities. They can still do things, you know, we can empower them to say, you know, "You can make this happen." Now, the tricky part with the migratory birds, the grassland birds, is that I read this article, and I have it up here now, "Why do, what do grassland birds need for migratory habitat?" And they basically say, "We don't know." And a lot more needs to be done. And because we could set up a nice little land property, and they reject it. They have to pick the property. But I thought in this article, they had a good idea that perhaps we could have some research projects about what we can do to attract these, these birds to, the grassland birds to this area and to certain areas of our community. So, and in the meantime, you know, we would have this area in the technology park, but they'd have to be weaned off a little bit, you know? They're not going to move if, you know, to a new area if they can still be in a certain area. So, but I mean, I think the Audubon Society, I don't know how to develop a grassland habitat for the birds, grassland bird habitat, but I think the Audubon Society is on it. So, you know, there would be a great partnership, there would be planning involved, and we can, again, use that unpurchased land as a bridge. And so, I think there's opportunities here, whether or not we prioritize that, this specific project or not, a lot can be done. And if you need to reach out to say, "City Council, here's what we're looking at, but we could use your help on this aspect of what we're doing," I mean, I think there is, again, well, let's plan that. That's a, that's a great question. Let's, let's plan that. As far as city staff, I don't think city staff should spend time on another thing here until we go through the priorities, you know, project and time here in August. So a lot of good things can happen, and let's, let's support that with our people planning and partnership way of doing things here in Dubuque. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Russell.
Thank you. Well, the last time the Audubon Society of Representatives were here, they invited us to, had an open invitation to come out and join them on a birding event. So I had the opportunity, and it was on this property that they're talking about, and I found the event quite interesting and educational, and their passion and their knowledge was very impressive. It really opened my eyes to the perspective of, of, of not only these particular birds, but birding in general, that it is environmental, it is for the people that enjoy the birds, but it's also tourism. People will come to certain areas when they know that certain birds are in the area. So, I also was quite intrigued by a number of the emails that I received with really good questions and links to more information, and so, for example, the idea of a bird-friendly community, and all of the questions that you have raised thus far. But I think, as all of you have mentioned, we need to get a full perspective on the opportunities and costs, and opportunity costs that go with this. So, not only other financial costs, if you choose not to develop a property that the citizens have invested in, but there may also be some opportunity costs that you're giving up if you choose not to have this kind of amenity in your community. I liked what Ms. Corfman reminded us that in our Imagine Dubuque Comprehensive Plan, we have a section about green infrastructure, certainly be worth revisiting and looking at that. But I would really appreciate having the expertise of people like this to do a little more research for us so that when we, when we do need to make a decision, that we have a broad and a well-rounded perspective of all the costs, as I've mentioned, that will help us to make the best possible decision for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sprank.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I still, my folks farm, and I'm involved with that, and we try to be very good stewards of our land. I guess my biggest concern when I look at this entire thing is when you have to deal with federally protected something. That's the question, that's the legal question. What does that mean? Does that mean we have to do something? Does that mean we don't have to do something? And that's my biggest question. Until I know that answer, I can't really make a decision as to where else we should go. That's my question. Like, if, are we supposed to continue to leave this habitat now that we know these birds are there, or do we have to do, or do we not have to? And I don't know. So, that's my biggest question.
Does anybody on staff have an answer to that question as of yet?
I do not at this point in time.
No.
Okay. Does anyone involved with the Audubon Society have a direct answer to that question? Do you know if, once species are found? I mean, do you have to leave it alone, or is it sort of during the nesting period? And if the answer's no, that's totally fine. It's just a question that's out there.
I think so.
And if you would, I apologize, but you'll have to come up so people at home can hear you, too. Sorry, you have to get on the mic. And if you wouldn't mind identifying your name and address, too, please, so we know who you are.
Yes, hello, I'm James Olson, eight sixty-seven Cleveland Avenue. These birds aren't, these birds are all, there's a federal bird act that all birds are protected except exclusion of like a house sparrows, a few, I think there's, might be a few more, but not too many. But this is, these birds aren't endangered. They're on, on, there's a worldwide organization that puts birds in special categories, and these birds are all in the least concern. But they are very special birds because the, grassland birds have been under a lot of pressure from agriculture, the seeds, all the seed manufacturers, there's called neonicotoids out there, there are coatings to seeds that don't do well for birds and all wildlife. And it's also with the new fast corn, we get fungicides that are now sprayed in the summertime, which are very devastating to all kinds of wildlife, where before we needed a hot August to do the corn, excuse me, to finish out the corn, now it's, the way the stuff goes so fast now with the new, you know, modified versions, that the August is, causes the corn to, you know, to start, so they need fungicides that's sprayed by the airplanes, stuff like that. The big thing is, these sparrows have really taken, all the sparrows have been taken, there's more than have been listed and talked about, but they, they are very endangered right now because of, just because of all the, all these different things and the
are very special birds, because the, grassland birds have been under a lot of pressure from agriculture, the seeds, all the seed manufacturers, there's called neonicotides out there, there are coatings to seeds that don't do well for birds and all wildlife. And it's also with the new fast corn, we get fungicides are now sprayed in the summertime, which are very devastating to all kinds of wildlife. Where before, we needed a hot August to do the corn, excuse me, to finish out the corn. Now, it's the way the stuff goes so fast now with the new, you know, modified versions, that the August is, causes the corn to, you know, to start, so they need fungicides that's sprayed by the airplanes, stuff like that. The big thing is, these sparrows have really taken, all the sparrows have been taken. There's more than have been listed and talked about. But they, they are very endangered right now because of, just because of all the, all these different things. And the grassland birds have been taken, the biggest hit all over the world. Canada's been doing a lot of research, in Europe, they've banned different things. And it is, it is something. So, it is very important with, right now with early alfalfa, that's something that's been strained also to be very early. A lot of alfalfa is being cut in May now, where it used to be a little bit later on. And that's been a boon for, you know, producing more hay. But so, the, it's really critical enough, when during the late May, early June, late June, a lot of times now, these grasslands are really disturbed then. And that has really been knocking out the nesting. So that's such a big part of it. And there's, you're talking about how, how do you, would you make these areas special? Behind Blaine's, that area back there, that one time was a beautiful pasture. It was bought, and the city has nothing to do with that, but it was bought. And it was graded over, there's big mounds of dirt because of earth-moving equipment. And they were just, then the developer put in the streets, and that just became vacant lots. And in four or five years, just the stuff that was growing in there attracted the birds. Now, it's almost the same thing that can be said out at the technology park. That was a pasture land, rolling pasture land. We came in, they developed it, heavy equipment came in, did its thing. And then the last number of years, what's grown back and stuff like that, the birds have chosen that area because of the vicinity of being out to the open area, and just being, this what naturally came up, remnants probably, there's probably some alfalfa, and there's some different, different grasses, but just the weeds and everything came up is what the birds like. So that's, that's pretty much it. There's not a, there's not a federal law about if you mow something, it'd be like, I know that they're investigating the, behind the area back behind Blaine's. And if that was the case, you know, like the, because somebody mows something early at a certain time, there'd be, there'd be federal charges against probably every pasture land farmer that's cutting hay. But so, that's not, that's not really the thing at all. It's just that these birds need, there's so much pressure, these birds need every chance they can get to be able to establish territories and, and remain, or make a comeback, because the populations have just plummeted all over the US, Canada, the Midwest, excuse me again, and all over the place. And so, that's basically-
Well, thank you, James.
That's it.
Appreciate that. Yeah, appreciate that clarification. Did that, so we have somewhat of an answer to your question there, Mr. Sprank?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, the city owns other land, and I was just thinking, well, I don't know how much they don't like airplanes, but we don't mow around the airport, I don't know. That's a close proximity of a migratory land that we're trying to rotate, possibly move them to.
Sure. So generally, unanswered questions as of yet, and still things that we're trying to discuss. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Ms. Farber, did you have anything else? Okay, Ms. Farber?
Just a couple of creative thoughts here about the research that was discussed a little bit here, is that the University of Dubuque, as you know, has a new environmental science farm out in Cheryl, and they have just acres and acres where they have all kinds of bees and birds, et cetera. And that might be a good area for the Audubon Society to reach out to, to Dr. Z is the gentleman that has that up. And perhaps he can do some co-research with the Audubon Society to see if potentially that would be a good place for, to put that square acreage for the grasslands, just, you know, FYI. And I did want to just give a shout out to the fact about the tourism and the opportunity for the city to have more educational programs with the, with the birds. I mean, if you take a look at what happens every time the eagles nest in Iowa and in Dubuque, there's just enormous following to that. And perhaps going forward in whatever grassland and there is, there may be able, an opportunity to put some hidden cameras in there and to take it to social media. And that would cause and create some marketing enthusiasm as well, and educational enthusiasm for that. But I agree with my colleagues, I think we need a full perspective here. And I would really in, look forward to continuing the partnership. And I greatly appreciated the fact you had mentioned in your letter about doing some fundraising for this site. I think that's also quite positive for the public-private partnership here. But I'd look forward to getting a little bit more information so that we have full, full data, if you will, about the pros and cons, and perhaps the best situation and the best place. So, thank you very much for your emails and for all the comments. It's really been educational from my perspective. I've learned a lot. And hopefully, we can move this forward in the appropriate way that's best for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Farber. Ms. Wethel?
A lot of these discussions and emails I received reminded me of professionally what I do outside of city council, which is I'm a nurse practitioner and a primary care provider. And so, my job is to see everybody for kind of a span of problems. And then when they need a specialist who needs to really hone in on a specific issue, I don't have the answer always, but I know where to get it. Or I know where to send that person to get the answer. And so, I received an email that somehow projected a disappointment that I didn't know more about how to preserve grassland birds. And please know that I am anxious to learn. I, I am present because I want to serve and I want to do the right thing. And so, thank you so much for everyone who's here, who's emailed with wanting to share their knowledge. It's really helpful for me. A couple of things that I basically had emailed some questions to our city manager. And really, what our function is tonight is to discuss what it is that we would like for a next step, if a next step is appropriate. And so, I would echo Mr. Sprank's questions about legal responsibilities, both for city property as well as, what is a private developer's responsibility for similar situations? Now, I know, and thank you for city staff exploring this, but the city is not eligible for the US Fish and Wildlife Bird Treaty Program because we are not at least 100,000 people in population. But that doesn't mean we can't use those best practices to grow populations in our community. And so, I would like the opportunity to learn more. My question to the city manager would be, in what department, if we wanted to say, explore, what are best practices of other cities that have taken this initiative? What department would look into that? Would that be sustainability? Just out of curiosity, what your thoughts would be on that?
Yeah, I, it might be multiple departments. So, you know, I don't have an answer right now. And so, if we get direction to do research and answer certain questions, we'll definitely find a path to answer those questions.
And so, I think in addition to those legal responsibilities, finding out if there is another municipality that has been through an experience similar, if we can somehow through, you know, collaborative work with other cities in, in the Midwest, it would be great to hear those experiences just as case studies for how they have either learned how to do it right, or struggled to do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, I just, I'm going to invite you to, do you have anything else to add? I just wanted to invite you, if you had anything that you wanted to say and didn't have the opportunity to say yet.
Well, thank you, City Manager Mike Van Milligan. The little bit of research we did was around that question of the US Fish and Wildlife Service Program related to, titled the Wildlife Bird Treaty Program. And in our research, we are not eligible for that program because we don't have at least a population of 100,000. What it was stated correctly, that doesn't mean we can't look at what best practices are in that program. But that specific question was raised much earlier in this process. So, we did look into that question, and we're not eligible for that program. Now, they have other programs, and we could look at, research those, but not that particular one.
Okay. Ms. Russell, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, earlier you kind of mentioned that perhaps the Audubon Society is the appropriate partner for this kind of a project. I mean, they are bringing this proposal to us tonight, but we clearly need more information. Is it possible that we can ask for a more, more detailed proposal that could answer, and then allow us to maybe ask some of the questions that we've listed here tonight, that we might want to build into a next step? I mean, rather than going to staff who are not really the experts on this topic, is that the approach that we want to take?
Yeah, so, I actually, I mean, I have a suggestion, and I'm, we can, you can shoot it down, or you can tell me what you think. So, you know, I think, I think it's clear that this is a, this is an issue that requires some, some careful thought and planning. I think, I just think there's, there's more to be known. I'm very, very happy that we're starting this discussion here tonight. But I do see it as the start of a discussion. You know, we've been talking about this, but we haven't really had a chance to have any sort of conversation. So, there's a couple of things that I think are really important in this. First, I'm going to go back to this goal-setting process. I think if we want the City of Dubuque staff to spend significant time on this particular issue, I really do think it needs to be a goal and a priority. I know it might not seem like it to every different person within the community, but our city staff is stretched incredibly thin right now. And particularly, you know, you asked the, I think, Ms. Wethel, you asked, you know, is there a department? I think about, you know, our Parks and Recreation Department, I think about our Economic Development Department, I think about planning. The folks that would be really involved with this, sustainability, you know, that it's, this is, this is a significant, this is going to take time. This is going to take a lot of time, and it's going to take resources to make sure that we do this right. If we want to do it that way, I do think it needs to be something that we prioritize and say that it's this. And it could be a priority lumped in with a larger priority. I think there are ways that we could think about that as a council if we choose to do that. Now, I say that with a caveat, 120 things we started with last year. And I want to make sure everybody is, I want to be straight up front with everybody, that this is, it's one thing in a long list of priorities for a city our size. So, you have our attention, but we are, we need to think this through and figure out what we can do. Aside from the goals and priorities and directing city staff, which, so, just to close that out, I don't think that I'm hearing anybody say we should direct city staff to do anything particular tonight. I think we need to talk more about this from a goals and priorities standpoint. But secondly, and this is more to the concerned residents and folks in the Audubon Society than anybody else who's interested in this issue, I think there's a whole lot that you can do here to be able to really help a group like us and other elected officials and other government, government bodies in this region along in figuring this out. I think, you know, you've mentioned things like researching more, you've mentioned things like identifying other places, you've, you've been effective at identifying some other locations that, that this, that this could be, you know, going from one place and then going back to the tech park and finding another place where we're finding migratory birds. We need that kind of help. And I think that putting this in, back in your hands to be able to provide us with that information. The second piece of that is, what I would invite you to do is talk directly to us as city council members. We may not be throwing this on another agenda if we don't make it a priority, but you can come to us and we can have discussions. You can invite us to your meetings. And if we, if we're able to go and talk with you about these things, we can have a little bit more of a discussion. You can educate us on the things that, that we need to do. I think there's a lot of organizing that can happen from a public standpoint that would actually be very, very useful in this discussion. So, I think that everybody's walking away here with some thoughts about what can we, what can we do. Again, I know this is a bit unorthodox in how we, how we usually approach things, but it's a little bit backwards for our process. But I still think it's really important that we've started this discussion, that we have some more possibilities for how we might move it forward. So, actually, I'm going to, Marty, thank you very much, but I'm going to, I'm going to wait for right now. Let's, let's talk though, after, you know, after today, and we'll definitely have some more discussions. Is there anything else from a council standpoint? Does, and I just kind of threw all that out there, Ms. Russell, does that generally answer your question that you just asked? Okay. Anything else we would need to discuss tonight? Ms. Farber, go ahead.
So, could you just summarize for us exactly what our next step is, what you're recommending as our next step?
Yeah, I think what's on our, what's on our plate right now is that we have the option as a city council to look at this as a goal and priority when we walk in the door in August and talk about goals and priorities. I also think that we have the option to talk directly with any concerned residents who might want to bring this to our attention and gather more information from them.
Okay. So, we are voting on this tonight?
We are, the vote that we are actually taking right now is to receive and file and have a discussion.
Fine.
And provide direction. So, our direction so far is, we are going to, there's nothing that we're asking staff to do right now, aside from, we're going to go back and look at this as a potential goal and priority, and then also have further discussion with community members about it.
Understand. Thank you very much.
All right. Everybody clear enough on that at this desk for now? Okay. All right. Look forward to the discussion continuing from a community standpoint. So, thank you very much for starting it tonight. All right. Well, with that, the motion was to receive and file and provide council directions. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Action item number six is Automated Solid Waste Curbside Collection System Implementation Update.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Resnick?
I move to receive and file and view the presentation.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Sprank. Am I coming to you, Mike, or going straight to you, John? John, you're up.
Thank you.
It was just on the files.
All righty. Good evening, Council Public Works Director. Here with me tonight is Assistant Public Works Director Ariel Swift and Jacob Jansen, our Resource Management Supervisor. We'll have Jake walk you through the presentation tonight, and Ariel and I will be happy, along with Jake, answer any questions you have. This has been a, a big project. We're ready to move into phase two of the project, and we'll let Jake talk a little bit more about that.
Good evening, Council. Jake Jansen, Resource Management Supervisor, like John said, here to give an update on our transition to an automated collection system. So, I'll speak primarily about what we achieved in 2023 and what we see into 2024 to cap off the project. So, the carts we distributed this past fiscal year, we issued about 12,000 carts in total. And there's four different colors on here representing our four different cart sizes. And you can see that the primarily, the majority of the carts we distributed were 35-gallon carts. And about 10,000 in total, about 9,000 of those occurred during the month of April. It was a department-wide effort, it was a lot of work, but a lot of great work, and really proud to be in the community and get it done so efficiently. But in total now, we have about 17,000 city-issue tipper carts into the community. And you can see the kind of the breakdown there as far as the distribution of cart sizes. And so, we serviced 20, a little over 20,000 households. So, 17,000 of our households we serve have a cart, we got 3,000 to go. To dig into the distribution of our basic service cart that occurred in April, we have for 35-gallon carts, we started on our Monday collection zone and worked Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we were able to get about 83% of the way there. We just had so many carts for this fiscal year with funding to get to that point. And then we also delivered some carts to our Friday customers, and so we're about 60% of the way there, about 1,500 folks still waiting for the 35-gallon cart. So, I'll speak more about this, but we did prioritize getting trash carts to all five days of the week for our automated truck, to make sure we can utilize the technology we have to the best of its capability. And so, you know, we've had a lot of folks call. That was kind of the hard part about the project, is we had the carts, and we just wanted to go, 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 and community members were ready for them, but we only had so many carts. And so, we had to put a pause in it, and we're ready for phase two, but for the actual folks that are still waiting, this map kind of represents it for our Thursday collection zone. You know, there's folks that are wishing to have them, and we hear you, we're ready to get them to them, but to actually hone it in, you know, what's delivered is yellow there, but the red is still kind of the neighborhood west of university towards JFK, still waiting. And then on Friday, you can see, this is the service zone where we service south of Dodge Street. And you can see, the majority of it's red, meaning we still have to deliver these basic service carts. But you do see some yellow or gold to the far southeast side. And that is our automated collection route for Friday. So, at the same time, we have an online forum, and we receive calls every day for larger carts, the point of a pay-as-you-throw. We know that the 35-gallon cart doesn't work for everyone. So, we have about 1,100 carts on wait lists for a larger cart, our 48-gallon cart seeming to be one of the more popular cart options. So, in total, we, we still need to distribute about 3,000- And so, moving to what still has to be done, kind of been talking about it, but, so we, we ordered, these, you could see our waitlist, like 3,000 folks, and that's how they break it down, by cart for the four different cart sizes, but we ordered more than the waitlist, and that was intentional, because we anticipate folks maybe swapping out to a smaller cart or to a larger cart, folks move out, carts break, and we don't want to have a waitlist in the future. We want to have the carts on hand, get it to folks, and really deliver in that, that side of it. And I guess I should say, once the carts come, the goal will be to try and finish this project by October 1st at the latest. So moving along, slide that I'm most excited to talk about is our automated route. So like I alluded to, we have, on our five-service day, we have a fully automated route utilizing the automated technology. And our driver who gets out 700 times a day on average is seeing that they're getting out about 20 to 30 times a day, so that's a 97% in cab rate, and they're getting out for those small, for the extra bags with our green excess garbage stickers are a small item. 97% is huge, and I think we were a little worried to see what's it going to actually look like until we get the carts out there, and we're seeing it's working. And so keeping our drivers in the cab keeps them safer and our community safer. The next area I want to provide a quick update on is our exemption program. So Public Works, we developed a cart exemption program for individuals physically unable to handle a 35-gallon trash cart or facing terrain issues. And since the program was released in mid-June, we've had about 46 applicants, 38 were specifically medical exemptions, meaning they had to talk to the healthcare provider, get a signature. All 38 of those, we've approved, and we had about eight terrain exemptions request, and each, the process there required Tony Severson, our lead sanitation driver, and myself, we scheduled one-on-one meetings with these folks and went to their home, saw the issue, and kind of just worked out a solution that worked best for them. So then, a little bit larger topic is our automated truck order. So just to, kind of, some background, so we have six routes, six trucks go out every day for our trash collection. One is an automatic side loader right now, which is pictured in, that's yellow. And then we have two rear loaders, that require two crew persons to operate, and then three semi-automatic side loaders, meaning that the driver has to exit the cab for every single stop, but they have a manual, or a automatic lift to help lift the cart. So with that, we were able to purchase two automatic side loaders that look identical to the one we have now through our vendor, and we purchased those at the beginning of fiscal year 2023, but unfortunately, the lead time for these trucks had been pushed back. And so we were promised that we'd be seeing them now in July, which would have been awesome, but instead it got pushed to January, and now our vendor is being very transparent that it might be next fall or winter, and it's just, it's a huge bummer. But as a department, we're exploring options to get ahead of this for future orders. But something we're really grateful that we're doing now during the month of, or during the month of June, Tom Kuhl, our, our fleet maintenance supervisor and myself, were able to get different truck demos from different vendors to really make, figure out what trucks works best for our community and work best for our drivers. And I won't go all into the weeds of the mechanics of trucks, because it's, there's a lot to it, and it gets me excited, but anyways, you could see that on the two different truck styles here, when having the drivers drive these different trucks and talking to different communities, we found that maybe a different style arm might work better for us, which you can see in the pictured in the white truck, a little bit different cab setting where the driver can actually sit down for a longer period, so greater comfortability, and a different injection method too, which seems to be a safer method too, meaning the dump, the ejection of the load at the landfill. So we're, we're grateful to kind of get crew insight of what works best for them and our community, and we're hoping to take that feedback into future orders. So the last update I wanted to provide is on our recycling carts. So in fiscal year 2023, we issued or had funding to purchase 400 blue 96-gallon recycling carts, and we were out of those by October. And so we, since then, have developed a waitlist of 900 folks that have called or sent an online form requesting one of these carts. And so I think it's just been a more popular way to bring the recycling to the curb, because we've issued the trash carts. And so folks are buying into carts, which is a really good thing, but we just don't have the carts right now to, to get to the community members. But we're coming up with a solution. So we were able to purchase 1,500 in this last order, so all 900 folks that have been waiting, some up to 10 months, we will be getting them soon as they come, everyone will get their cart, and then we'll have some left over. But it's likely, you know, the more carts you put in the community, more people will request them, because they're talking to their neighbors. So we will probably be out by winter unless we can secure some further funding, and we've explored some, some opportunities. So this winter, we applied for a grant through the federal government, through the EPA, it's titled SWIFER, so the Solid Waste Infrastructure for Recycling. We applied for a $2.5 million grant to get four automatic side loader trucks and 18,000 recycling carts. If we received that funding, it would be huge. It's really competitive, there's like over 20,000 applicants across the country, they'll give one per state. We made it to the next round, which is great. We'll find out by the end of summer, and if we don't get it, we could apply again. But something that's maybe a little bit more feasible is a local grant through our Dubuque Metropolitan Area Solid Waste Agency. We applied through a waste minimization grant that was seeking 400 additional blue recycling carts, so that should help for this fiscal year as we likely will run out. Additionally, just wanted to provide an update on another waste minimization grant from this last year. We, through the agency, were funded to purchase 9,000 recycling stickers, and we issued them to, the crews throughout the year has been putting them on our yellow bins in the community and blue carts. So it's a lot, but essentially, I would like to answer any questions if you have any, but just want to say, thank you for the support for us to move to an automated collection system. We're really excited to see the end result, the trucks actually doing a large part of the work to keep our community and drivers safer. And so we're, we're almost there as far as getting the carts out, and it's been a department-wide effort, effort, not just Public Works, but the entire city, and, you know, it's been, it's been fun, and it's been hard work, and we're excited to see the end of it. So thank you.
Well, thank you, Jake. Questions? Discussion?
I have one.
Yeah, Ms. Rousell, go for it.
I just want to say thank you for your extra efforts for those 46 people that needed us special accommodations. That really shows extra customer service, and I'm sure that they are greatly appreciative of, of that. So thank you for those extra efforts.
Yeah, we want to make sure we're accommodating to everyone and make sure we meet people's needs, and, you know, I think there was a fear that, you know, hundreds and hundreds of people, but it's the folks that need it, I think, are taking the steps and we're making sure we're servicing them the way they need to be serviced.
Very good.
You personally visited those homes, you and staff and other people, to be able to do that?
Yeah, yeah, it was, it was interesting.
What you're saying is that's the level of customer service that we can expect from people that work for the City of Dubuque, is that what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Wow.
Actually, they're kind of fun. It's fun going and talking to folks. We've been at homes, we've, they offered coffee, but, you know, sometimes we just had to, you know, go there and just talk about each issue and solve it, and it was good.
This is, I mean, this is great news. This is better than I expected, to be honest. 97% rate of not having to leave the truck, I mean, that's, that's what we were hoping for, but it, it's better than what I even thought we would be getting. So this is really, and the, the fact that you've rolled this out, the way you explain that you did it to, to do it for the automated, to basically make it the most efficient, so you're looking at the automated routes first? I mean, you're just, the whole thing has been really smart. It just has been a, just a wonderful example of how to pull this off.
And I will say, the in-cab rate of 97% was a lot on the hard work of the driver, doing the education of stickers, tags, talking to customers, I mean, getting the carts out there is one thing, and then it's the education of properly setting it out and getting folks into the right-sized cart, so kudos to the drivers there.
Yeah. Well, this is great work, and this is a big change. I mean, this was, we, we talked a lot about this. This was a really big change, so the fact that this is going so well is really good news. Thank you very much for the update and the presentation, we appreciate it. Oh, yeah, Ms. Resnick, go ahead.
Very quickly, I just wanted to thank you again for the exemptions. I remember when this first was talked about, Mr. Sprank mentioned that Dubuque is not, some of the areas of Dubuque are really tough for this kind of automated system, and, and I agree, and there's got to be a way to help these people who, it's, this is not Cedar Falls, right? Everything's flat and straight, and this is kind of exciting, because we've got rivers and hills and lots of things, but it doesn't help with trash collection. So it's wonderful that you went out and, and talked to these folks and really made it work. So better than I, better than you, better than you maybe expected, and because of your hard work. So it's kind of like, to me, it's like the roundabouts, everybody was kind of worried about that too, and now I think Dubuque citizens really love, like the roundabouts and the convenience that they have. So again, thank you, as the mayor said, thank you.
Yeah, it's been a very positive change, so thank you. All right, well with that, thanks for the presentation, the motion was to receive and file, hear that presentation. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Action item number eight is Adoption of a Policy for City Acceptance of Streets and Commercial Subdivisions.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Rousell?
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolution.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Rousell, second by Sprank. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. City Engineer Gus Sahoyes is recommending city council approval of the policy for city acceptance of streets and commercial subdivisions. Including public streets and commercial subdivisions allows greater vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian connections, which furthers the city council goal of connected community, equitable transportation, technology, infrastructure, and mobility. Giving the developer options on street ownership will likely attract development in the area, which furthers the city council goal of robust local economy, diverse businesses, and jobs with economic prosperity. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Farber?
So I want to thank Gus and Mike and his staff for bringing this to fruition here, because I think this was part of our conversation that we had at the work session when we talked about development agreements, and I do believe that the developers are greatly appreciative, as I'm sure the residents are, of them having that option to be public or private. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Sprank, yeah?
Well, does that mean that the streets will be built to a standard? Like, they're, they're going to be a certain width, they're going to be a certain depth, and so that way, in case in the future, where if the city has to take over those publics or private streets, is that the kind of the, that's what this language is all kind of stating essentially?
So it gives the developer the option, not for the streets that are internal to their development, so just access their parking spaces and that kind of thing, but the streets that access multiple lots in a private development, this, the developer can have the street designated as a public street as long as the developer builds it to all the city standards, sidewalks, thickness, width, curb and gutter, all of that. So sometimes even in those cases where it services multiple lots within a private development, the developer might choose to still keep the street private, but it's their choice. Up, up till now, it's not been their choice. Instead, if it was a commercial development, it stayed a private street, but now they'll have a choice.
Got you. Thank you. All right. Well, I, I love this idea, and I love the fact that it was identified so quickly, Gus by you and your team and the rest of the staff, to be able to be something that we can, we can work with developers on and really be able to make a positive impact here, so thank you very much for your work on it. All right. Motion to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Action item number nine is Corrective Legal Description for Ordinance 30-23 for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2023.3.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Resnick?
Yes, I move to receive and file, adopt the, well, I move to receive and file, and I further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council approval of Ordinance 3023A, correcting the legal description in Ordinance 3023 for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2023.3. After holding a public hearing on June 5th, 2023, city council reviewed and approved Ordinance 3023, authorizing SubArea T, created by the Dubuque Industrial Center Urban Renewal Plan, version 2023.3, to be included in a division of revenues within the district. Subsequently, the documents were forwarded to the county auditor, where staff identified a Scrivener's error in the legal description included in, included in Ordinance 30-23. The legal description included in the ordinance contained an incorrect bearing in the legal description of SubArea T. And before I read the next paragraph, I'm going to have to apologize to my Latin teacher, because I took two years of Latin in high school, and I don't remember a word of it, and I'm probably going to murder this pronunciation. The attached ordinance includes the phrase "nunc pro tunc," which in Latin means "now for then." This means that the enclosed ordinance, 3023A, is intended to have a retroactive impact to correct the Scrivener's error, so that the ordinance will continue to have the same effective date, and such effective date will not be changed by the corrective ordinance. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Well, you passed the test of our resident Latin expert, so, and that, you are, you're our resident Latin expert, so you're the best that it gets for the City of Dubuque there, kind of. All right, any discussion? Seems simple enough. Okay. All right. The motion is to receive and file, we have the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber?
Aye.
Resnick?
Aye.
Sprank?
Aye.
Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Wethel?
Aye.
Rousell?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Action item number 10 is An Ordinance Amending Tax Increment Ordinance 33-23 for the Switch Homes Housing Urban Renewal Area.
Mr. Mayor?
by you and your team and the rest of the staff to be able to be something that we can, we can work with developers on and really be able to make a positive impact here. So thank you very much for your work on it. All right. Motion to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber. Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passed at six-zero.
Action item number nine is correct, corrected legal description for ordinance thirty dash twenty-three for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2023.3.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Resnick.
Yes, I move to receive and file, adopt the, well, I move to receive and file, and I further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Mike, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic development director Jill Connors is recommending city council approval of ordinance thirty twenty-three A correcting the legal description in ordinance thirty twenty-three for the Dubuque Industrial Center Economic Development District, version 2023.3. After holding a public hearing on June fifth, June fifth, 2023, city council reviewed and approved ordinance thirty twenty-three authorizing subarea T created by the Dubuque Industrial Center Urban Renewal Plan, version 2023.3, to be included in the division of revenues within the district. Subsequently, the documents were forwarded to the county auditor, where staff identified a Scrivener's error in the legal description included in, included in ordinance thirty dash twenty-three. The legal description included in the ordinance contained an incorrect bearing in the legal description of subarea T. And before I read the next paragraph, I'm going to have to apologize to my Latin teacher because I took two years of Latin in high school, and I don't remember a word of it, and I'm probably going to murder this pronunciation. The attached ordinance includes the phrase "nunc pro tunc," which in Latin means "now for then." This means that the enclosed ordinance thirty twenty-three A is intended to have a retroactive impact to correct the Scrivener's error so that the ordinance will continue to have the same effective date, and such effective date will not be changed by the corrective ordinance. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Well, you passed the test of our resident Latin expert, so. And you are, you're our resident Latin expert, so you're the best that it gets for the city of Dubuque there, Kenna. All right. Any discussion? Seems simple enough. Okay. All right. The motion is to receive and file. We have the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber. Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passed at six-zero.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Res.
I move final consideration and passage of the ordinance.
Second by Farber.
Motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber. Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passed at six-zero.
Action item number ten is an ordinance amending tax increment ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-three for the Switch Homes Housing Urban Renewal Area.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file. I further move that the requirement that a proposed ordinance be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed be suspended.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Mike, on to round two of Latin, please.
Thank you. City manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic development director Jill Connors is recommending city council approval of an ordinance amending tax increment ordinance thirty-three twenty-three for the Switch Homes Urban Renewal Area. A resolution twenty, two hundred nineteen dash twenty-three adopted July fifth, 2023, city council adopted the Switch Homes Housing Urban Renewal Area Plan related to housing and residential development. Also, on July fifth, 2023, the city council adopted ordinance thirty-three twenty-three allowing for the collection of property tax revenues generated from any development in the area. After the Switch Homes Housing Urban Renewal Plan and subsequent ordinance thirty-three twenty-three were adopted, the developer had the area replatted. This replating altered the legal description of the area. The ordinance allowing for the collection of tax increment must be, must contain the accurate legal description of the area. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. My mistake, no Latin involved. Any discussion? All right. Motion is to receive and file. We have the three readings. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber. Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passed at six-zero.
Action item number eleven is work session request for Mounds Foundation.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and set the work session for August seventh at 5:00 P.M.
Second by Sprank.
Motion by Rousell, second by Sprank.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
In conversations with a council member, there's difficulty getting to the meeting by 5:00 P.M.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And so maybe what we could do for this one is start it at 5:15, and I'll just work with the other work session, because there's going to be two that night to try and divvy up the time between 5:15 and 6:30.
I would amend my motion to change the time to 5:15.
Second by Sprank.
Sounds good. All right. Then we have the motion to receive and file. Set that work session for that date and time. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber. Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passed at six-zero.
Action item number twelve is work session request, smart parking mobility management plan update.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
I motion that we receive and file and set the work session for Monday, September eleventh at 6:00 P.M.
Second.
Motion by Sprank, second by Rousell. Just to clarify, that is a night that we don't have a city council meeting, correct? So it is a separate evening. Okay. All right. Still working for everybody? All right. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Farber. Aye.
Resnick.